Good evening, acting chair. I will call the Trinity County Planning Commission meeting of June 26, 2025 to order. Welcome to the public, staff and fellow board members or commission members. At this point in time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. At this point in time, we will call the meeting to order and open for public comment. This is for members of the public to address any items that are not on any agenda item listed in the regular calendar during the commission meetings consideration. In addition, the planning commission can provide provides members of the public with public comment period, or the public may address the commission on any matter not listed in the agenda item. Go ahead. Are you ready to open public comment in the room, Debbie? Okay. We'll start with public comment in the room.
Hello, Chair and Commission. My name is Matthew Jefferson. What I'm asking for today is I'm asking for Carol's fall recusal on agenda item two. She lives in the opt-out zone. She was the organizing force that created the opt-out zone. In the agenda minutes when the opt-out zone was put in in 2017, her name and phone number is on the top of the petition as the contact and return information. She owns property in there. It doesn't matter if it's an up or down, financial or loss gain. It is a clear FPPC violation if she votes on this item. We're really asking that you like look at this in a legal way, like I know you guys want to do, and we're asking for you to do the just thing and recuse yourself from this item. I have been persecuted to a 10-year campaign of defamation of character from this woman and her husband. And I'm not, I don't care. Take my license, take my livelihood, take everything I have. You've been trying to do it for 10 years. I'm not going to stand here anymore and idly let her destroy our community. Nobody in our community believes what this woman wants. I got close to 100 signatures in one day today, supporting me, my farm, and my friends here and all the grandfathered farmers. She's trying to wipe out agriculture in our community. And we need your help. I don't know what else to do anymore, you know? And I'll, I'll sit here and take it, take my license, make me be the martyr of this. Take the shirt off my back. But we're the righteous few that stand up for those people that can't have a voice. And what has been done to us? She's been telling people in the community to go and tell the K O A that they should fire me because I'm a criminal. And you can laugh about it, but it's been happening. Okay? She's been just for 10 years, it's in the agenda minutes. It's outright discrimination and bigotry to the clearest sense. And if you don't recuse yourself, I hope you don't, so I see you in court.
Is there any other comment in the room? Are there any comments not associated with agenda items on Zoom?
Lisa?
It's not letting me turn on my video. I would like to be seen by the commission, please.
Hang on, Lisa, just a minute, we can't hear you.
It was disabled. It was on earlier. Someone disabled it.
One moment there, working to address the issue. Are we able to allow her video to be visible to us? And Lisa also requested to have the, her video.
It was on earlier. It was disabled by someone. It said disabled by the host.
Try again.
No, you cannot start your video is disabled by the host.
One moment, Lisa.
Okay, it looks like it says I can start it now. Okay, thank you. I'd like to be present in the room certainly, but I'm unable at this time. And I have a request as well for either an FPPC letter that clears Commissioner Fall from. An agenda item. However, we're unable to speak to that agenda item before she would recuse, so that's why I'm bringing it up in public comment now. The California Political Reform Act governs.
One moment, Lisa.
Excuse me?
Just one moment. We would have comment, public comment on an item before we would make motions to vote, so she would be able to make this comment towards a specific.
I wouldn't be able to make the comment before Commissioner Fall would be listening and participating in this item. We don't give public comment before you all open the, open the item.
We're doing public comment for items not on the agenda.
I think is the request for her to be recruit, recused from the item as a whole? And that's.
Correct.
From the whole meeting?
From that whole, from that whole item.
We can address that when we get to that item.
No. You won't be able to because she won't recuse herself. It needs to be recused and she needs to leave the room at the onset prior to any discussion of the item if she would recuse. If I can't bring that up now, I'm not going to be able to in public comment. She'll participate.
County Council, can I have you weigh in on this item, please?
Sure. Now that it's made clearly apparent that they want to make public comment regarding that item, I would wait till that item is raised and then I would allow them to speak before the item is heard. That said, you can do it however you want. You could do it now. It's up to you, up to the chair.
Thank you, County Council. We will proceed with having the public comment prior to the item being heard. And I will make sure to verify, Lisa, your comment is into item on our regular calendar agenda number C, the Community Development of Cannabis Deviation Number 25 dash oh five, and that's to the ambiguity determination. Is that correct?
Well, the issue is then I'm not able to participate in regular public comment after there's been the discussion or the technical questions. So I'm not able to, you know, normally we are participating after the discussion. So we're able to weigh in on the discussion. Are you going to allow two sessions of public comment then, two opportunities?
County Council, it's my understanding that it's at the chair's discretion to allow a second public comment. Do you?
Correct. Yeah, you have, you have sort of wide purview to do that, yeah.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Sean. One moment, we have heard that the Zoom that people are unable to join at this point in time. Debbie, would you want to take a five-minute break while we address the Zoom issue in order to allow people to join?
I would like to speak in general when that's a, in general public comment, when that's an opportunity as well, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, five-minute break, five-minute recess, and we'll get back to you. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for joining us, and we appreciate the time to address our technical issues. We believe that they have now been resolved. If there are any issues, please let us know. At this point in time, we will continue public comment on any item not currently identified in the regular calendar agenda. And we will reopen the public comment for any items not on the calendar for today on Zoom at this point in time.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you. Good evening, Acting Chair, Commissioners Lisa Wright-Lewisson. I found that there is probably inadequate training for our appointed and elected officials regarding ethics. The California Political Reform Act was established for that very purpose. And at the same time, simultaneously, the FPPC, the Fair Political Practice Commission, was established as well to help govern that act. One of the things I'd like to bring to the commission's attention in general is the idea of a conflict of interest. A conflict of interest exists where in the personal financial impact of governmental decision is addressed. So you must disclose your assets and income that may be materially affected by your official actions. So many of you have filled out the proper forms to do that, hopefully that you all have. However, there may come a time when a decision comes before you where the conflict of interest would arise. If you own personal property within a particular area that might be affected by your decision, unless there is a public generally exception, and that is a term of FPPC, public generally exception, then you must recuse. The public generally exception is when the government decision's financial effect on a public official's financial interest is indistinguishable from its effect on the public generally. Typically, that would mean that a significant segment of the public is affected, such as at least 25% of all real property within the official's jurisdiction. If it's 25% or more, then it's considered to be a public generally exception to the conflict of interest laws. There is, it is a misdemeanor violation to not uphold this, or violate this particular ordinance and, or not ordinance, too many ordinances in my brain, the act. So I do ask you to please thoughtfully consider when items come before you that are not affecting the entire county, whether or not you would qualify. FPPC has a hotline, a calling, a number you can call for advice. They'll issue letters that give you clearance. Please do that in advance if there's any question to be ethical, because we are having a challenge with ethics in our government, government-wide, particularly Trinity County as of late and potentially for this evening. So thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to further discussion later this evening on a similar topic. Thank you.
Debbie, is there any other public comment on Zoom? Not at this point in time. All right, thank you. We will continue into our regular calendar. We will start with item A, the Community Development Planning Approval of the Minutes from the May 8, 2025 meeting.
I move approval of the minutes from the May 8, 2025 meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. Majority. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, continuing, we'll address item B, Community Development Cannabis Appeal of CCL eight three nine, also P twenty-five dash zero eight. Do we have county presentation, please?
Chair, may I request to change the order of the items and do the housing element presentation first? I thought we had made that change when we updated the agenda, but I think it would be more efficient use of county resources since we have one of the consultants from the Mentor Harnish team waiting online to do the housing element update, but your pleasure.
So we're receiving a full presentation or it's just a?
I do believe it's a full presentation, including slideshow.
One moment, please. Well, I'll make the motion for the board to, for the commission to decide if we would like to reorganize the agenda in order to hear item D ahead of item B and C. So the, the motion has been made.
I'll second that.
So the discussion is now open. I was unaware that there was going to be a full presentation for D today, but we do have many members of the public here, which I'm not sure what our comments would be associated to D at this point in time compared to B or C.
I also just want to point out, and I apologize for the confusion, but if you look at the digital agenda, it looks like the housing element is actually item B, but agreed that on the printed versions, it does not reflect the same order that's represented on the digital agenda.
Yeah, and Chair, this is County Council. The Chair can, you don't need to make a, you can make a motion if you would like, but it's typically not necessary. It's, it's the chair's purview to sort of order the agenda as you see fit.
Thank you, Sean. Out of the respect to my commissioners, I would like to provide them with the opportunity to weigh in prior to moving forward.
Well, I'm, you know, there, there are a lot of people here, you know, I think interested in speaking. And so I would lean more towards, I apologize to the consultant, but I would lean more towards the public in the room versus the consultant. I don't. but I would lean more towards the public in the room versus the consultant. I don't, whatever you guys.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that came here today to speak, and so out of respect for the public, I second or echo Commissioner Fall's sentiments.
Agree.
So do, is there another motion or?
It's at your discretion, Chair.
Okay.
I think you've got consensus.
So at this point in time, we will proceed with the printed agenda, which has items B with the community development appeal of CCL 839, C, which is community development cannabis, the deviation 2505, which is the ambiguity determination, and then to item D, the community development planning with the Board of Supervisors to adopt and update the housing element. So at this point in time, we will continue with item B, please.
So you'll see in the attachments to item B on the printed agenda, there is a memo dated June 19, 2025, in which I detail that the approval of the license and the associated document for CCL 839 was rescinded, and therefore the appeal is moot. If you have any questions for me, I'll do my best answer.
All right, Commissioners, are there any technical questions at this point in time?
I'm just wondering in general, could you describe what, you know, the rationale was for rescinding the appendix C and the license?
There, there were a few reasons. Essentially, in meeting with, in trying to coordinate site inspections with other agencies, we weren't able to do that leading up to this agenda or to this meeting. And we also didn't receive final confirmation from the local district fire chief about questions that I had posed to him. And so rather than continuing it to a date uncertain, if there were needing to be any changes to the project details, I thought it was more prudent to just simply rescind my approval. And then if any changes are made to the project, project description, or anything else as a result of multi-agency coordination or coordination with the local district fire chief, CalFire, then those project details could be updated, and we would renotice it at the appropriate time when that comes up.
So does the appellant get their, their money back?
My recollection, when we talked about this at the Board of Supervisors, was that it could be a recommendation of the Planning Commission to refund appeal fees. And so if that is your recommendation, then I encourage you to, to make that.
Well, I would like to move that the fees for, for appeal, P 2508, be refunded to the appellant since that appeal is now moot.
Noted.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Can I, can I ask one question as the Chair? Can I, do I need to open the public comment before we address this motion, or address this motion and then continue?
I believe that's your pleasure, but in the past, when an approval has been rescinded and the appeal deemed moot, we just moved on. So I, your, your pleasure.
So you're just considering it direction from the Planning Commission to refund the appellant's fee?
Yeah, I think if you guys want to make that as a motion, I don't know if Sean Cameron wants to weigh on, you know, procedurally how that should be done, but.
That's fine. I mean, typically, I would think you would refund the fee if it, if the appeal was made moot at this stage at least. So, but yeah, that makes sense to me. You can make a motion as you wish.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and. Let's do. Okay, we can do a all in favor? Aye.
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 All right, were there any other technical questions for staff? No? All right, we are continuing on to item C, which is the community development cannabis, Division 25-05, the ambiguity determination. So we will proceed with the three-minute public comment, or sorry, let's, we will have public comment on this item. And there is also an additional memo that is being presented to planning commissioners at this point in time. So we will open with public comment for this item. Didn't that happen after we finished the, or no? I don't, I don't know which ways.
Are there sufficient copies? Public can also have the memo?
Were there additional copies provided for the memo that was just passed out?
The 10 copies you're for, for, tell me?
Only 10 copies were provided, which were distributed to county staff and to the commissioners. Apologies. Okay.
Before we start discussion of this item, I need to explain why I'm not recusing myself, right?
Okay. At this point in time, Commissioner Fall will make a brief statement, and then we will proceed with item C.
It's been requested that I recuse myself prior to discussion of this item, so I wanted to briefly respond. So a similar complaint, FPPC complaint was filed against me years ago saying that I could not vote on issues related to opt-outs because I lived in an opt-out area and that I had a conflict of interest. That complaint was ruled unjustified by the FPPC under the public general clause. And so, you know, formally, there's no reason for me to recuse myself. I would just also like to briefly respond to some personal comments directed at me. I've never spoken to K O A about Mr. Jefferson. I've only spoken to the manager once, and that was asking her to donate $200 to buy hot dogs for our Firewise Fair. So I'm not sure where that rumor got started or where that's coming from. I'm also not trying to harm the Trinity Cannacraft business. As recently as the last Planning Commission meeting, I mentioned that I thought the East Fork should be potentially taken out of the Coffee Creek opt-out area. And, and if the neighbors agreed, to me, that's a wonderful place to have a cannabis and winery trail, an ag trail. So again, I'm not sure where that comment is coming from. I do not live in the Coffee Creek opt-out area, which is, I think, part of this you're going to hear public comment about. And so other planning commissioners live in opt-out areas, and for some reason, they're not at being asked to recuse themselves, just, just me. So I just don't understand that rationale. Prior, okay. So that's what I have to say for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Fall. We will continue with having a public comment for the community development cannabis, the deviation 25-05. How we will proceed is we will allow the three-minute public comment to be heard now. Then we will hear staff's presentation. Then we will allow reopening for the, for one minute of public comment to continue. Right? Yes, but it was advised by Sean to allow the public comment first before hearing it, then allow the hearing, and then allow public comment to reopen. Okay.
Oh, sorry, I meant that with, just with respect to the conflict of interest item that Lisa was raising. Outside of that, I, it is generally better to have the presentation first and then allow for public comment on the item.
So then at this point in time, we will proceed with county's presentation on the community development for the ambiguity determination, and then have general public comment.
Chair, if I may, ask just a point of clarity. You, you said that you were going to allow for them to speak on that before about the conflict of interest. Is, are you gonna, is that going to still happen, or no?
Not a public comment, but that particular comment.
The, the, not the public comment about this project, but the proposed conflict of interest.
Okay. So we will allow for one minute for each individual to address the conflict of interest on this item. And I will ask that there will be respect and decorum throughout this process. I will open that for one minute at this point in time to members of the public in the room.
Good evening. My name is George Lawrence. I live in Coffee Creek. And I'd like to thank the board or the commission. I'd like to thank you for, we are in an opt-out area, and we work very hard to have that. And we're a vacation area. We have people that come from the Bay Area, from the coast. They come to our vacation spots, K O A, Carville Inn, Ripple Creek Cabins, Bonanza King. They're there to enjoy and have a vacation spot. They're not there to be involved in the whole marijuana trade, the smell, any of that. So anyway, I'd like to stick with our opt-out area. It has been working. It's been working fine. And I would thank the commission for all you do. Thank you, and thank you, Carol.
Matthew Jefferson, Trinity Center. I apologize. I lost my cool. That wasn't cool. My point of this is the agenda item is pertaining to the North Coast Water Quality Control Board permitting. And the two items talk about expansion and such other things that would affect cultivators in both of those areas. You live in the Trinity Center Community Services District opt-out. This agenda item will affect that.
And other commissioners live in other opt-out areas also.
Any public comment on Zoom related to the conflict of, conflict of interest discussion?
Lisa, go ahead.
Thank you, Acting Chair Commissioners Lisa Wright-Lewiston. And I would ask for decorum that the commissioners do not respond to public comment. That's totally inappropriate. And Commissioner Fall just did. I do want to point out that the letter that Commissioner Fall received regarding the 2022 complaint that was directed at her voting regarding carve-out actually did not provide for carte blanche exclusion of her for voting in carve-out matters. That one in particular used the public generally exception. However, it was for a much broader overall ordinance update. And that's why it, it fell into that higher category. I do not believe that this smaller carve-out discussion, these particular areas constitute more than the 25%. So the letter was specific to that one decision, and commissioners should be requesting whenever there's a potential for financial interest conflict of FPPC, a letter of clearance. Thank you.
Are there additional comments on Zoom? No, not this time. Thank you very much. I will also add that we were advised by county council that commissioners may make statements or address public comment briefly as needed. Okay, at this point in time, we will close public comment on the conflict of interest, and we will open it up to staff to please present item C.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, Dru Pobani, Cannabis Division Director. I'm going to give a little bit of background and context to this item and hopefully resolve some of the confusion surrounding it that we've already started to encounter. Specifically, the request of staff related to this ambiguity determination item is to clarify some points that are unclear, that we could refer to as ambiguous, related to if parcels qualify for cannabis licensure under code section 1743050A7, which is limitations on location to cultivate. So I'll give a little bit of background here. On October 3, 2017, Trinity County adopted ordinance number 315823, which went into effect on November 3, 2017. So just, you know, pay close attention to the dates and timelines here, and hopefully it's apparent if you read through the staff report. But on October 3, the county adopted essentially the first final cannabis ordinance. On, so basically, a month and a half before that. So sorry, on October 13, so two years prior, the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board rolled out the first cannabis-related regulations, essentially in the state at that time. There were, obviously, there was Prop 215, but the North Coast Order was the first of its kind where the North Coast decided to create the cannabis cultivation enrollment process. So between when it was adopted in August of 2015, leading up to the adoption of the Trinity County cannabis ordinance in October of 2017, Prop 215 cultivators were encouraged to enroll in the North Coast Order. The North Coast Order was superseded, the 2015 order was superseded by the 2017 order, which was essentially the cannabis cultivation policy, which then applied to the whole state. So the state water board collectively decided to adopt what had been, sort of, you could call it the pilot program in the North Coast region and apply it statewide. So the 2017 order happened, was adopted two weeks after we adopted our cannabis ordinances. So then on November 3, 2017, when our cannabis ordinance went into effect, which was roughly two weeks after the first statewide enrollment for cannabis, the 2017 order, as I'll refer to it. In terms of the way that I see the timeline progression, and my conclusion is that logically, it's reasonable to assume that if we look at code section 1743050A7, which is the limitation section, it calls out specifically, it delineates what areas were the original opt-outs, and says that an exception to this limitation is allowed for applicants who have submitted an application for enrollment under the 2015 order by a series of dates. My conclusion is that those dates, the tying the exception for cannabis licensure to the 2015 order was so that only those sites that were previously enrolled in the original North Coast order would qualify in these opt-out areas. So that was to prevent additional new cultivation sites within these original opt-out or limitation areas. What I was hoping that the, the Planning Commission would take into consideration was that where the ambiguity lies in terms of the way that that code is constructed where the ambiguity lies in terms of the way that that code is constructed ties to the definition of legal parcel, which I'll read. Legal parcel means a parcel with a distinct and separate assessor's parcel number. Where contiguous legal parcels are under identical ownership by an individual or an entity, such legal parcels shall be counted as a single parcel for the purposes of this chapter. One of the reasons that I believe that this creates ambiguity and the rationale behind scheduling this ambiguity determination is that although our definition of legal parcel is what it is currently, an APN doesn't guarantee, one, that it's a legal parcel. So an APN can be established by the assessor's office, but it doesn't mean that it's a legal parcel by by the legal definition and county council can weigh in on this if there's any confusion there. But I've had significant discussions with them. So specific to the grandfathering clause, if we want to call that, or the exception to the limitations on location to cultivate, as part of enrolling in the water board program, all APNs need to be listed where the cannabis cultivation and cannabis activities will be occurring. Additionally, the square footage of the canopy and the total disturbed area on that site need to be listed on the questionnaire or the applications for enrollment into the water board program. So although sites could have enrolled or applied for enrollment under the twenty fifteen order, in my opinion, they're limited by what their enrollment between twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen was in terms of the specific APNs that the cultivation is located on and in terms of the canopy size that was approved or, you know, indicated on the application for enrollment. Anyone who was previously enrolled or any parcels that were previously enrolled in the original twenty fifteen order in order to stay compliant have had to re-enroll or keep their enrollment current as we've gone through the twenty seventeen order, the twenty nineteen order, the twenty twenty-three update. So they're, they would have to reapply essentially or re-enroll to stay current in the state water board program. So as part of your packet, you'll see, one, that we got a variety of comment letters, mostly about a specific location in the North Lake area. We also were given a petition just a few minutes ago. And I I think that, just to, just to kind of clarify, what we're talking about doesn't change the areas that are specified in that code section. It only clarifies if what was listed on the twenty fifteen enrollment is what those cultivation sites should be bound to in terms of the potential to add additional APNs to a water board enrollment. Because right now, someone who is enrolled in the water board program, whether they're in an opt-out or anywhere else in the county or the state, can re-enroll or add APNs to a current enrollment. They can also go ahead and expand their cultivation if that's allowed by local land use. So the two issues that I was hoping we would address in this ambiguity determination item are can, are these historical enrollments bound to the APNs listed on the original twenty fifteen order, the application or questionnaires to enroll under the twenty fifteen order, or the canopy sizes that were listed on those documents as well? It doesn't get into where the opt-outs are, whether or not anyone who has a current license will qualify. Or even if anyone who has a historic enrollment that specifies APNs and canopy sizes would be able to qualify either. It just clarifies that the maximum allowable canopy size is correlates to what was on the original twenty, you know, was applied for under the original twenty fifteen order and that the APNs associated with the enrollment under the twenty fifteen order are the only APNs that can be allowed to have cultivation activities on them. The intent was that that would prevent expansion of cultivation operations within the opt-out. So someone who had an existing, a pre-existing historical water board enrollment under the twenty fifteen order would not be able to purchase multiple surrounding properties and with our unclear definition of legal parcel, then add them to a current enrollment and apply for multiple licenses or move their cultivation operations onto other new parcels, creating new disturbance. So I think that that covers most of it, but let me know if you have any technical questions.
So would I be correct in saying that this agenda item potentially is related to a license application or the application under review by Double G LLC on Eagle Creek Loop? I'm just trying to figure out what I need to disclose. So if it is any, in any way affecting that license application, I I would appreciate knowing.
I, it, it, that is an example of a parcel or application that would be that the ambiguity that exists in the limitations on location to cultivate cannabis would be clarified via the resolution that you all can take action on today.
Okay.
But I intentionally did not address specific projects in this item. There are several other projects not specific to that same exact scenario as it relates to multiple APNs. But we do have other pending projects that have requested to, say, expand their license type into greater canopy sizes. So I did not intend to have a specific review of any projects as it relates to this item.
Okay, but just, you know, to be cautious, I would like to say that since it may potentially affect that particular application, I am familiar with that property for over twenty years. I worked with the previous landowners, the Cunningham's on the Heritage Orchard Project and tromped around the ranch a lot. I sent information to the current landowners about that project. I know residents in that area. They contacted me with questions about this, you know, potential project. I did research in the file to familiarize myself with the issue. But I was not aware that this ambiguity determination was in any way related to that project until I saw it in the newspaper.
And so I want to clarify two things. One, there's some information in some of the comment letters that references that a denial letter was sent out for that project that you're referencing, Commissioner Fall. That is not correct. There was a draft letter in the file that was signed but was never sent out. So I just want to clarify that. And then you also pointed out that attached to the resolution in the backup, there are several pages of an old resolution that somehow carried through that are not intended to be a part of the first two pages of the resolution. So please disregard them. And let's make note of that when we get to.
The the Exhibit A to Resolution PC twenty twenty-four oh three, that's just included as an oversight.
So after this, yeah, after the signature lines, after the signature lines on page two, the rest of that should be disregarded because that's an unrelated carryover.
Are there any additional clarifying questions for staff at this point in time from the commission?
Yeah, if I may, just for deepening my understanding. Of, so with the way that it is interpreted now, there would be the possibility of putting cultivation, small, ten thousand square foot farms, gardens on each of the APNs for a, a ranch in the opt-out zone, a opt-out zone that has numerous parcels, that has one home, that has an existing cultivation area. Because of that home and because of the way that ordinance is written, you're asking for clarity on if it should be allowed to have, you know, if if it should be able to be interpreted to be able to allow a farm on each of those APNs?
Sort of the opposite of that. Currently, my interpretation of that code is that because it ties it to enrollment in the twenty fifteen order, no additional APNs can be added or would qualify for a license that were not listed on the original twenty fifteen order.
Right.
So what I'm asking for essentially is concurrence from the planning commission with the conclusion that I have arrived at, so that we can have more solid ground as we go forward.
Based on my, my recollection with the planning process, must have been seven years ago, with regards to legal parcel and contiguous parcels. It was a result of the recognition that there were large ranches that were on, that had many different parcels connected to that ranch. That property owners had a right to be able, you know, like to, if need be, absorb and do lot line adjustments and absorb the whole entire ranch into one APN. But that would be a nightmare for staff and planning. And so it was established to allow for that of legal parcel that was continuously owned by the same individual to alleviate the the burden on the planning departments.
So related to potentially merging parcels, I think there could be an argument there where if a property owner owned multiple APNs that was in one of these limitation areas, if they were to merge those parcels and combine them into a specific parcel with an APN that was the same as what they originally enrolled in the water board with, that perhaps that expansion, if you will, could be allowed. Part of the rationale from my perspective for this item relates to, if you look at the criteria that have been established in the more recent opt-out ordinances, it's very explicit that no expansion is allowed. And so in keeping with that intent and and my interpretation of this code section is that additional APNs and moving a historical cultivation site onto an adjacent APN is not consistent with the intent of that code section.
And and if you merge them into a single APN and you have multiple cultivation licenses, wouldn't that be stacking?
Agreed.
And that's not allowed?
Currently not allowed.
What if they only had one license? Then you could merge both parcels, right? It'd still be in compliance.
But if they're within one of the opt-out zones, they still would not be able to expand under the current opt-out ordinance language, correct?
I, I think that they I think that they would still be bound by the maximum allowable canopy in terms of what they listed on their original twenty fifteen enrollment.
Okay.
So that is an option.
If, clarify for me.
To merge two parcels and and keep one cannabis license?
I can't say for certain if parcels were merged, if they would retain or have the ability to retain a specific assessor's parcel number. I don't know the answer to that.
And when, and so limiting it also to the place and the size. And so if you have a four hundred acre ranch and there is good soil on one area that in this opt-out zone, the farm, the cultivation area is locked to the point that was established in twenty fifteen and cannot be moved to any other point on the parcel.
That is the way that I read the intent of this limitation section, yes.
We have additional questions for staff at this time. At this point in time, we will open for public comment. We will allow for three minutes for each individual to present and we will start with public comment in the room.
Matthew Jefferson, Trinity Center. I want to point out a couple of things. In the ordinance, there's absolutely nothing with the Trinity Center Coffee Creek Volunteer Fire District that talks about no expansion. That's in other opt-out zones. Each one kind of has its own thing. Ours has, says nothing about no expansion. It just says that this parcel, once it's enrolled, gets its grandfathered right to have a cannabis license. And what our petition says, that our entire community signed, says that we should have the same rights as any other farmer in the county, which includes expansion and all those things. I know we can't stack yet. How, I don't see adding another ordinance and adding another layer of regulation into this makes any sense at all. If you want to expand, I'm sure you're going to have to get like a CUP. So there's going to be another layer of approval if you wanted to expand. But in short, like our community does not agree that we should have this different set of rules and regulations. Our community, hundreds of people have signed a petition that says we should have the same rights as all the other cultivators in the county. And I just think this is like pretty cut and dry on that there's been direction for like five years that you can that the whole legal parcel thing, that if they're contiguous, it can move around and they've like, there's been direction given for five years that this is okay. And then like, all of a sudden it changes? Seems strange. And it really seems really strange to me that this agenda was released on Saturday with comments and comments are cut off on Friday. So this staff report was put in and the comments that were received, those people were told about this agenda item before the public. And when the agenda item came live and you were allowed to submit comments, comment, that period was already closed. And that's why the only comments you see in that staff report are from those two people. I don't know who, I don't know what, but somebody manipulated this. Somebody was feeding information somewhere. And certainly doesn't seem legal. I know that's how it goes in Trinity County, but I think we're trying to change those things. So hopefully we can look at that. And I mean, I, because I couldn't put comments in because it was already closed.
Yeah, George Lawrence again from Coffee Creek. And no, we do not agree. The whole community does not agree to allow this. And there's a little confusion on our part in the first place. When we became an opt-out area, there were some farms that were going on and they were considered to be grandfathered in. Since that time, those farms have sold. They went to banks for, because they were repo'd or there was some kind of a but there, there was a separation from the there was a separation from the original owner that had the grandfathering to have the, the marijuana, the farm, whatever you want to call it, greenhouses. But part of it was too, that if there was a bunch of, uh, made, you know, the, had, uh, greenhouses on the property, different things, that, you know, they had some investment, so that could continue on to the new owners. None of these two properties that we're talking about here tonight, they don't have any, they don't have any, um, greenhouses. I don't know that they even had any water supplies on, so I don't see how, went from the owner that had the, uh, grandfathered to the bank that repo'd it, to now these new owners who knew we were an opt-out area, but still bought the property. I'm even not sure how they could even apply to have permits. Anyway, thank you very much.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ben Kellogg. I live in Weaverville. I don't have a horse in this game, but I do from an economic development point of view. This county is going bankrupt slowly. It's like a dying county. And I don't understand why the cannabis industry is being singled out. Would we be doing this if this was a five hundred acre, you know, cow ranch? I don't think so. We only do this for cannabis. Everyone in this county turns each other into pretzels when you bring up the word cannabis. And, you know, that's segregation. It shouldn't happen. I would rather live next to a marijuana farm than smelling horse manure all day long. So in my opinion, we should be keeping everyone equal. Thank you.
My name is Jessica. I was born in Weaverville and raised in Hayfork, graduated in 2004. I now live in Lewiston with my fiance and we own and operate the Lakeview Terrace Resort. I witnessed the evolution of marijuana industry from a time when there was no regulations and significant criminal impacts on the county. I wa- when I was in Hayfork, I had a friend and her boyfriend, they were murdered in the middle of the night, right down the road from me. And that was awful. So then I've seen it to become where now the county is like to legalization and now heavily taxed and overregulated system. The farmers who choose to do the right things, the right way, who've jumped through all the hoops, who follow the law, pay their taxes, are now the ones struggling the most. And it feels as though they're being punished for doing the right thing. It's not just about survival. It's a real business opportunity for the county if we do things the right way. If we support these farmers instead of pushing them out, because if you push them out, what's going to happen is the black market's going to come back in and it's going to cause a more negative impact on the county again. And I really don't want that. So I see this, if we work with them, as an opportunity to attract people from all over the state and beyond, boosting tourism and local economy. And if we do it right and increasing the reputation if it's done right. So I'm here to support the local marijuana farmers and advocate that they be treated with the same respect and legitimacy of any other agricultural farmer, farm. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
I am Ryan Sinelli and I, I have the Lakeview Terrace Resort over in Lewiston. I don't really have a horse in the race either, but again, from an economic development standpoint, I think that we're missing the boat. I mean, there's other, um, there's other states and other counties that have been very successful in driving tax revenue from correctly working with, you know, farmers just like anybody else. So I think that the, the people that are trying to do it right again and have done all the right things and tried to, uh, basically do whatever was asked of them through the county when it, from what I've seen, the county's made it very difficult on them. So I think by penalizing them and inhibiting them, we're holding ourselves back from generating more tax revenue. And that's, you know, basically what the complaints are most of the time is we just don't have any money to do anything. So why wouldn't we open this up and create a new revenue source in something that's known as the Amro triangle? So the farmers are going to be here regardless of whether they're in the black market or the regulated market. I'd prefer to work with them and even incentivize them to do it right. And I think the opposite seems to happen more than I'd like to see it. So I do support the farmers as well, and I'd like to see them treated fairly and really be an extra added economic revenue source for the county. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Marissa. My husband Brad and I bought the Eagle Creek Ranch. We love it and hope to continue to care for it for the rest of our lives. Reviewing the history of this issue, the way the county has treated our project, we are directly affected by this determination and we feel there is no ambiguity. We bought a cannabis property in the Coffee Creek opt-out that was grandfathered in. We've been working on getting a permit in a different location on our property that is much more suitable for farming in an environmentally friendly way, unlike the original site. This is evident by the nearly two hundred tons of trash we removed due to the previous owner's infrastructure collapsing in their attempts to make that site farmable. We've done everything the county has asked of us, including adding the APNs to the water board enrollment per the county's request. We've had every single agency involved on our property, including Trinity County, and they have all signed up on it. The county planner assigned to our case told me that everything was done on our end and that he has recommended approval of this project. The county has been treating this project as though it would be acceptable to move this whole time, move it this whole time since April 27th, 2021, when the cannabis director agreed with us that the regulations state that contiguous parcels shall be treated as one parcel. At the last hour, when we thought we were about to get our permit, this issue came up again. We believe that after everything we have done, all the time and money that we have spent on this project, doing everything the county has asked of us, that our project should not be derailed by this issue at the last moment. There's not a lot of opportunity in our area and we would just like to be able to create a job for ourselves on a property that we love. Five years is a long time to wait for a permit. The original intent of opt-out in our area was not to ban cannabis cultivation, but to determine who was willing to follow the rules which we have done. It is our opinion that since we meet the requirements to not be included in the opt-out, we should be treated the same as any other farm in the county. The county has clearly treated our whole property as one. Please do not change the rules after five years of leading us down this path. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Hi. My name's Michelle Taylor, and I don't speak in public very often. I'm very nervous about this. Anyway, my husband and I, uh, reside in Coffee Creek on Eagle Creek Loop. We also own Ripple Creek cabins, which is located right next to Eagle Creek Ranch. We are family-owned operated resort. We've owned Ripple Creek for over thirty years. Ripple Creek cabins is open year-round. We and our guests enjoy beautiful scenery surroundings on Eagle Creek Loop. Our family works very hard to maintain our resort. We love what we're doing and our guests love to come to our cabins. The opt-out area for Coffee Creek Volunteer Fire District was overwhelmingly approved in 2017. Many residents and businesses signed a petition to opt-out of the cannabis grow. We ask that you respect our opt-out areas. The ordinance states the cultivation licenses are only valid for opt-out areas and water board certification and application for enrollment when submitted by November 30th, 2017. I agree with the cannabis department's recommendations. The debate, the date, November 30th, 2017, is a cutoff date for opt-outs, cannabis licenses in the Coffee Creek Volunteer Fire District. The definition of a parcel does not pertain to opt-out ordinance and was never meant to be. Opt-out license holders should be able to move their grow, not be able to move their grow to other up parcels they own. During this essentially, during this, is issuing a new license, you're issuing a new license after November 17th, 2000, November 30th, 2017, which grandfather parcels does not state you get to have other parcels added and you don't get to change your cannabis size. Uh, we, we do even have, why do we even have opt-out areas and ordinances if the existing rules are going to be changed and manipulated? Our guests come up to the Trinity Alps to enjoy the surroundings and quiet. They spend money at restaurants, stores, they rent boats on the lake, they go whitewater rafting. I have collected TOT dues and paid them for over thirty years. This, and our guests will not come to Ripple Creek or Trinity Alps if they're start smelling cannabis right next to us. And this has happened before in the past with the previous owners. And I have guests that have never come back because of that. We are not opposed to cannabis. The Eagle Creek Ranch owners have a grandfathered license to grow on a twenty-five acre parcel across the river. And we are not opposed to them running their business over there. In fact, we wish them well. We hope that they succeed. Thank you.
Rhoda Kane, Trinity Center, Coffee Creek, East Fork Road. I mean, I agree with her. The previous owners of Eagle Creek Ranch were bad actors and they left a really sour taste in a lot of people's mouths, and that's really, really unfortunate. The application in, for enrollment in North Coast Water Board applies to a parcel, not a license. It applies to a parcel. The legal definition, or the definition of legal parcel is in the ordinance. There's not a separate definition of legal parcel in any of the opt-outs. The one definition applies. Mike McCune, on October 3rd, 2017, in the meeting when the ordinance was adopted, oh, wait, this was transportation, uh, tippet. He said to make sure that they understand that the intent of number seventeen.
Apologies, can you speak up please?
Said that the intent of number seventeen, uh, he wanted to be sure that everyone understood the intent of number seventeen was to allow for some flexibility for people that own both parcels. And just, and it's just a definition. If a guy has one, two, or three parcels under the setbacks, it's just to say that he had a house on one parcel and intended to grow on the other parcel, he would be allowed to do that if they were contiguous and owned by the same person. The reason I submitted my petition again is mostly just that, so that the sentence that says a facilities, grandfathered facilities should have equal rights and responsibilities to any other in the county. There is no, no expansion clause in the grandfathered clause related to the North Lake opt-out zones. Every different opt-out has a different set of rules that come with it. There is no, there never has been rules ever made or passed that cover all the opt-out zones together as one. They've, they've never gotten around to that and, um, it would be inappropriate, but, I'm living in a constant state of fear that I'm going to lose my home due to other people's fear. That's how that circular thing goes. I don't really see any ambiguity here. I feel like we're still fighting reefer madness. The definition of legal parcel is definition of legal parcel. I'm not sure where, um, people got the information of emails that were sent between the director and a consulting agency, but that's probably neither here nor there. I agree. I don't think we should be manipulating and changing the ordinance. I think we should just leave it alone. As far as like water issues and all this, of course, the sequin mitigations take care of all that. I think it's really sad that there has to be so much division in the community and I just, I just wish that we could just.
Thank you for your time.
End this. Thank you. Bye.
My name is Kathy Jason and, uh, my husband and I own property on Eagle Creek Loop. We have been there, we've owned, we've owned property on Eagle Creek Loop for forty-three years. We have a parcel that borders Eagle Creek Ranch and we also have a primary residence just, um, just a short walk from the ranch. And we came there for the beauty of it, the serenity of it. It's a, it's very remote in the winter, but it's worth what we have there. It's a very unique place and the ranch is beautiful. And we've enjoyed it for forty-three years and we enjoy it being an opt-out area because we don't want to see the project move closer and closer to our border, to our front door. So I'm just asking that you think about, well, first of all, I'm not opposed to cannabis. I wish them well on their parcel 21. I wish them success and, and I want to be a good neighbor, but please consider those of us that have been in this community for so many years and we want to preserve what we have and coexist with them. Don't forget about us. Thank you.
A little late to the, to the meeting here. I'm sorry about that. My name's Larry Fitzsimmons. We have just sold our home on Eagle Creek Loop, but I, I felt that since we own it up until, uh, uh, the middle of next month, I, I should speak. We're in an opt-out area. And, uh, one parcel was granted a, a grandfathered in, just that parcel, just this one over here. That one was, that one's grandfathered in. But now we're here and we're, you gotta talk about, oh, well, well, any of the parcels. No. Unless that stuff's all conglomerated into one big parcel, it's still a separate parcel. And I'm two chunks away, uh, it's a good eight hundred, uh, eight hundred feet down the road, but my wife can still smell cannabis when it's being dried next to Ripple Creek there and, uh, can't smell it from over on 21. And, uh, so I think what we were told originally should be what really happens. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Susan Corrigan. As previous owners and developers of Eagle Creek Ranch, and I was involved with the unfortunate players of Feeling Groovy, um, you have a really hard task above, before you right now. And pretty much the task is, is that there's been a very gray area on these APNs on what your council's asking you to clarify. So ambiguity means there's confusion. Pretty much there's been confusion from day one with our cannabis policy in Trinity County and they've been revisited and then there were opt-out areas. These folks bought the property, um, before the opt-out and then the opt-out came to Coffee Creek area. I have great sympathy for the neighbors. Anybody who's living around cannabis, yes, it's a different smell than cows or horses, but it's farming. I've represented farming for thirty-five years running the farmer's market. I think that we missed the boat on running this as an agricultural project in Trinity County. If we'd ran it the way agriculture is being run and was run, we might have a viable economic If we'd ran it the way agriculture is being run and was run, we might have a viable economic situation. But I think tonight before you is not Eagle Creek, it's not the neighbors, it is confusion in your policy. And it seems to be that that confusion is constantly what keeps coming around. And so I have sympathy for both the farmers, the people in the opt out area of Coffee Creek who are still trying and Matt and Rhoda. Yes, they get passionate towards you Carol, they get passionate, but they are passionate in their community. They do a ton for their community. Um, Marissa and Brad have moved to the area. Um, it's my understanding they have been good neighbors. They'll continue to be good neighbors. They'll work with their neighbors. But they're, they're there and they have the permits and so we just need to clarify for council and yourselves and our county what, what it is. And there is very much ambiguity on this. You guys have visited this before. It's come back around. Here it is. And so it's the gray area that raises these emotions, brings them to the forefront and everybody's having to go through it again. And so that's the sad part about this that I see. And so I thought I'd just come tonight and say, make it clear because APNs have been able to be moved, they have been able to be readjusted and these folks have worked five years to do that. And so we don't have clarity. So please make that clarity. I think that's what tonight is about, more that than it should be the emotion of whether it can be, whether it can't be, because it is there. They have it, they're grandfathered in and so it's not clear. So good luck with that. Thank you.
Hello, my name's John Jason. I uh, live on Eagle Creek Loop Road uh, with the rest of the gang. Horrible thing happened seven years ago that we do not want to relive. And um, when, when the original, not the original, but the previous owners of Eagle Creek Ranch came in there, they uh, they got the permits and they were grandfathered in to go into that uh, parcel 21 on the other side of the river on 25 acres, clearly far removed from the population center and uh, and the, and the guests that frequent the cabins in our, in our little community. But as Sue just stated, it was, that's seven years ago and, and we have all had what we felt, believed clarity in what, what you meant when you created the opt out areas. We all believed, I think, the growers as well as the general public that created the opt out areas that these were site specific. They were granted those opportunities to grow in those areas, not continue to merge towards the population as time went on. And now seven years have gone by and this is the first time we've crossed this path. So obviously we're upset because we never knew this could even happen. It wasn't possible. In fact, we in the Eagle Creek Loop area did not believe that the, the license could even be reinstated because it had fallen off. The, the previous owner was no longer the previous owner, but the bank because it was foreclosed upon. Who had the license? Where did, how did it all of a sudden reappear? And who was paying the fees for the water board? So what continued the process? We don't understand, but we definitely don't understand how what was so clear to everybody that these sites were site specific and they couldn't be expanded upon because if they were expanded upon, they came into our opt out area. Not away from, but coming into it. We strongly, adamantly don't like that. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. So in the staff report, the uh, there are two questions really being asked.
Will you introduce yourself, please?
I'm John Brower from Junction City. So they're really asking for two separate questions at the end of the staff report. It'd be nice if you guys broke your deliberations and voting into them separately and voted separately. Um, and perhaps even take comments separately. They're pretty different issues. But the first question is uh, enrollment of additional parcels under Water Board orders that supersede the original North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board order 2015 shall not qualify for the exemption, exception allowed for cannabis licensure in areas listed in the ordinance. And I think that is something that's, that is clear in the ordinance. I don't see any ambiguity there. The uh, the statewide general order that followed the, the North Coast was after the uh, the deadlines to have a North Coast regional prior to the opt out zones. But it was always intended that the uh, Water Board order prior to the deadline in the opt out zones be a placeholder for future licensure. It was, it didn't, there was nothing that required immediate licensure or to maintain Water Board status. Only, and there are hundreds of parcels in Trinity County outside of these opt out, this opt out zone, but elsewhere in the county that also have these early North Coast Regional Water Board orders and many of those property owners remain hopeful that it could act as a placeholder for future licensure someday, maybe. The second question about um, the, just a sec here. That the cannabis square footage listed on the application um, be the maximum allowable. That also seems clear um, in ordinance. I don't see a lot of ambiguity there. Although the, also in the ordinance is something very, very important where it says that, that uh, contiguously owned parcels be considered one parcel for this entire chapter. The entire chapter being of uh, the land use code being the cannabis ordinance. So it's the entire chapter including grandfathering in of parcels in opt out zones that are to be considered, uh, you know, consider multiple contiguous parcels as one for this.
Thank you, John.
Permitting purpose.
Uh, good evening, Dana from Hayfork, uh, Chair and Commission. I can relate to the frustration about changing the goalposts and that I'm, I can feel it in the room. It makes your job harder to make a decision when there's so much emotion to sort through, um, I believe, as an empathetic person. And what I want to focus on um, is the, the thing that's making people so upset is, is how, my personal take on it is a, is a prejudice about a thing that's marijuana, cannabis. You could keep naming for a while. It's a plant, it's legal, it's agriculture. It's a way of life and culture. It's part of Trinity County culture. Some people are opposed to it. Some people are opposed to a lot of things, anything really. Ironically, cannabis tourism is a thing. Some people want to come to Trinity County to check out and enjoy themselves in nature with cannabis. It is not a deterrent or a repellent anymore than any, any other thing is. I think it's important to stick to the facts. The water, it's listed in the opt out that the cannabis department paid for, cannabis program paid for. The Water Board enrollment is a placeholder. And unfortunately, this isn't like a general dealing with ambiguities. It's very personal about a specific project which makes, I think, it even harder to make a clear decision. I empathize with the changing of the bar, seems like the rules changing. I know that that's painful. But I also am very hopeful for the future of Trinity County and like some, a glimmer of hope for economic stability in our cannabis industry and that does include cannabis tourism that I'm very proud to be a part of. Thank you.
Is there any additional comment in the room? All right, we will move to Zoom. Yes, Lisa?
Uh, thank you Chair, Commissioners, Lisa Wright-Lewisson. You know, we've heard a lot about the carve outs and people's feelings. It's really a relic carve outs are of the war on drugs. And there's no land use basis and as many have stated, as well as this commission and the Board of Supervisors, that cannabis is agriculture. Part of the tenants of our, our general plan will be that we are going to promote ag, agritourism. Well, that includes cannabis. Over 72% of the public in the United States thinks cannabis should be legal. So there are plenty of enthusiasts that's, that go to nature that are coming and they wouldn't mind to be able to uh, partake in a cannabis experience. So some of this is just really like relics of the past and, and prejudice. But our question before you is not that. I just want to state that because there's a lot of this kind of miss you know, information, I guess, that's being presented or spoken about. So really what's before you, I don't think is ambiguous. I don't think that you can read intent into the words as they're printed in code. The code is very specific. There's one line that allows for the exception to the limitation and those carve outs is allowed for applicants who have submitted an application for enrollment under the North Coast Order 2015, blah, 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 by certain dates. There was never uh, ownership restrictions. There was never expansion restrictions. None of that applied to these carve outs and there were opportunities to pull those in when they did enact the other carve outs and they did not do that. Further, it's very clear, number two, that the definition of a legal parcel, and you have to enroll a parcel in the Water Board, so the applicant piece uh, does go over to legal parcel, means a parcel with a distinct and separate assessor's parcel number. Where contiguous legal parcels are under identical ownership by an individual entity, such legal parcels shall be counted as a single parcel for purposes of this chapter. Now you might say, hey, the APN means something else or hey, legal parcel means something else, but it doesn't in our code. We have to follow what our code says. Our code is not ambiguous. That we should be allowed to operate as per the code and that's the way that uh, many people had been directed who do operate in the carve outs, which hopefully in our general plan update will simply go away or be established as exclusionary zones with actual land use uh, reasons that they're being excluded. But for now, I think it's premature to make any changes to anything, to adopt any kind of uh, resolution, but to stick to the code. You can't change the code in the resolution and now is not the time to be changing this code singularly. So we have the code. It is what it is. You had to enroll by these certain dates. If you do, your legal parcel also includes your contiguous parcels. So I hope that you find in that direction. Thank you.
Catherine Sidman?
Uh, Catherine Sidman, Lewiston Road, Lewiston. Acting Chair and Commissioners, I just want to thank you for doing this really hard job. It's um, uh, it's hard to imagine that you're volunteering for this, but I know what an important component it is, especially as we're working on the general plan update and all of these things are happening and I just really appreciate the time and attention that you take to serving our community in this way. There's a lot of, a lot of emotion in the room. We were locked out of Zoom for a minute and missed some things, but we came into a hot room for sure. And I think while I, um, I mean, it's hard not to notice the fact when prominent business owners and members of the Chamber of Commerce come about an obscure land use issue, it's hard to stay focused on land use ish, just the land use component and um, because this has rippling effects that are um, difficult for our local economy for sure. But if we just focus purely on the land use, I think it's so clear. John Brower did a great job of summing it up in terms of contiguous parcels. I, cannabis is agriculture as both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors have said and moving through the general plan. I just think um, we just need to focus on the land issue, land use issues. If there was, if this was any other kind of agriculture, if any of those resort owners had a big resort that was always known as their resort and there was a parcel and they wanted to put a little, another little cabin on it, they would not be facing this kind of just gyration. It's like turning ourselves, like Ben Kellogg said, turning ourselves into a pretzel trying to justify treating a class of businesses in our county in a way that we just wouldn't imagine treating anyone else. And it's um, getting fatiguing. So I think the way that you cut through that, the way that you cut through that is to focus on land use and focus on the purpose of the Planning Commission. It's very clear that these are contiguous parcels. We all understand what that means. We all understand that cannabis is agriculture. That's been agreed to. So I think focusing on those things and, and removing ourselves from from all the emotions of it is the way to go. Otherwise, we're going to be where we, where we've always been and all this general plan work is for naught. If we are still going to legislate from the Planning Commission dais on a parcel by parcel basis, based on who are our neighbors and who do we align with politically or other ways? If we're going to get past that, we just need to focus on the land use, land use issues at hand. It's an agricultural parcel doing agricultural activity that it's been licensed for with all of the commensurate years and thousands of dollars of information. The application is solid. I just think we move.
Thank you for your comment. Adrian Keys?
Good evening Chair and Commissioners. I apologize for not being there in person. Unfortunately, this evening in my neighborhood, we have had a group of local tweakers running wild and robbing houses, destroying people's property. And I am more than a little bit shaken. We've had a lot of law enforcement out here today and this evening and I've been under a, like, a considerable amount of stress and none of it has anything to do with cannabis. Um, what I would like to follow up with that is I do not see the ambiguity in here. I understand why this has been brought forward, but the code relating to the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board is explicit. And I know that I was at the um, previous meetings where the transition from North Coast Regional to the state general order was discussed in depth. And I also believe that Commissioner Fall was at that meeting. So I believe that that issue has been resolved, that the intent is quite clear. The definition of contiguous parcels is written into code specific to the cannabis ordinance and it's already been read. I won't reiterate it. Um, it's quite clear. There is no ambiguity there. The ambiguity to me is coming from the fact that this hearing is being treated like an appeal of a license that I have never seen noticed. I do not have access to any of the site specific application parameters that have, that were, that were noted in the letters, which really appeared to be letters of opposition to a project. They didn't have anything to do with cannabis. They didn't have anything to do with county code. So I'm not certain where the ambiguity lies here. Is, is the claims in these letters of opposition, are they accurate? Is that the plan? I have no idea. I really don't. This hearing needs to stick to the facts. It needs to stick to the county code. And, and I believe that county code is eminently clear. And I hope that you all agree with me. Thank you very much. I am going to go back to watching my property and making sure that none of my cars get stolen by meth heads who have been running wild in this county for the full twenty-five years that I've been here. And I've never seen a concerted effort to do anything about it. And I apologize for my emotion this evening, but my emotions are actually quite high. I've been involved in what could have easily turned into a life and death situation for the last four hours. So I wish you all a good night. Please put this resolution where it belongs and it is in the unambiguous category. Thank you.
Thank you.
Double G seven, five, two, five. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Brad Vogel. I'm the co-owner of the Eagle Creek Ranch with my wife, who's in the room and spoke to you guys. I wasn't able to make it tonight, but I did have a few words that I would like to say and a couple of points to make. First of all, I believe cannabis is agriculture and should be treated as, treated as such. Functioning cannabis farms are a benefit to the health of the local economy. Second of all, there was a lot of thought, time and community meetings to craft the ordinance the way that it was written. I don't believe that we should be crafting a new set of rules for a select group of farms. The opt out was not meant to be a total ban on growing cannabis in the Trinity Center and Coffee Creek areas. If the county wanted to ban it outright, they definitely could have. This was a compromise. And the legal parcel has been clearly defined. What we have here as far as our project is a question of can we move our cultivation location to a site that is far more environmentally friendly? Or will we be forced to rebuild in a location that is not at all favorable to farming? Trinity County has agreed with us on this point for over four years. A farm that has met the criteria to be excluded from an opt out zone should be treated the same as any other farm in Trinity County. I would respectfully ask you to please vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
No other comments on Zoom?
Thank you. At this point in time, we will close comment. Is there a motion from the commission?
Could I, I'd like to make a disclosure because it seems like this is about, if I may, Chair?
Yes.
Because it seems like this is shifting away from the ambiguity and so much energy about one particular license. The license holder, Brad, sent a letter to all the commissioners yesterday and lent the phone number and expressed if I'd like to give them a call. So I called them and I had a ten minute conversation with Brad, who communicated all the amount of energy that they've put into it, all the work that they've cleaned up and the reasons behind them wanting to move the cultivation area. I just wanted to disclose that information.
Uh, in the spirit of transparency and as to how Commissioner Fall alluded earlier, I also lived in the Weverville Community Service District, so I also live within an opt out zone. Do, do commissioners have clarifying questions for staff that they would like to make prior to a motion?
Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion? Can we choose to allow some discussion before a motion? County Council?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, you can have a full discussion before any motion is made. Yep.
Thank you. Well, in that case, I just, I guess, I support the staff recommendation and I would like to explain why. So to me, the Eagle Creek Ranch is just an illustrative issue of the can of worms that we open when we allow expansion of onto parcels that weren't originally listed with the water board. And, and here's why. One is, you know, Duncan and Adrian and I, yeah, we've been through cannabis discussions since, you know, two thousand sixteen, seventeen. My understanding was that the intent to put the grandfathering in for opt out areas was to recognize that there were historical existing farms and we wanted to allow those farms to continue. And I think that's what the neighbors understood. So, so when you talk about Eagle Creek Ranch, I'm going to ask you to visualize this. It's a large ranch. There is an APN ending in number twenty-one, which is at the north end of the ranch in the northeast corner. It is across the river from the rest of the ranch. That's the parcel that was grandfathered in. And that's the parcel that essentially the community understands, yeah, you can still perfectly legally have a licensed farm there. Okay, fine. You heard the people here say, okay, fine. What is being proposed now is to move the parcel across the river, still at the north end of the ranch, but across the river. There's another parcel ending in nineteen that's not on any, it's not listed in any part of the application. So the parcel further south, parcel closest to the community, parcel number eight, is the one where the drying, you know, operation would occur. And so what you're doing is you have a parcel far away. I mean, I, I tried to measure it. You know, I'm driving down the road with my truck odometer and it was like between three tenths and four tenths of a mile from, because it is a big ranch, from where they historically grandfathered could grow versus where they're considering having their operations. And so, and this parcel where they're proposing to include in their premises is, it was only added to their water board permit in August of two thousand twenty-four, so seven years later. So that's the kind of thing where, you know, what's the time limit when you can add a parcel? Is it seven years, ten years, fifty years? Oh, well, okay. But the neighbors are kind of like, well, when is this going to, you know, end? So, okay, I'm speaking. So we're not saying, don't grow on parcel twenty-one. We're saying that's what we understood. You know, the community is saying this, this is what we understood was grandfathered. By expanding to all the other parcels, which on the map are not even contiguous as far as what they've included, you're impacting a long-term business. So you have a licensed grower with a certain property right to grow. And then you have a long-term recreation business that really caters to people wanting that wilderness experience. This is, if you think Coffee Creek, this is actually miles and miles north of Coffee Creek. It's out in the middle of nowhere. The people that visit there want to be in the middle of beautiful wilderness. And so I understand the resorts concerns about the compatibility. So I think you should allow them to coexist. I think you should respect the business that pays T O T. And you should also allow the grower to grow where historically people understood they could grow with the way the ordinance was written. If you allow expansion onto contiguous parcels, you're essentially creating conflicts in the future because you're allowing people to expand where historically the community didn't think they were going to expand to. And I don't want to keep creating these kinds of conflicts. I want people to coexist with, okay, I knew you were going to be over there and I'm over here and we're going to each respect each other's properties, right? So anyway, I do really feel sorry for the current landowners. I mean, I do feel that you've been led down a path. I really wish the staff had asked for this kind of determination a long time ago. But it's just coming before us now. So anyway, I'm, I guess I'm doing my discussion pre-motion.
If I may, Chair? I feel like discussing a particular project is not what is at stake here. And I feel unprepared to discuss the dynamics, individual products, projects where one commissioner knows it very thoroughly. I'm trying to visualize it, but there's no maps before me. This is not about one project. This is about, this is about opt out zones in general. And this is about the definition of contiguous parcels and, and, and the definition of a of a legal parcel. And so this is very emotional. There's a lot of emotions here, but we're not talking about this project. We're talking about the general, there's opt outs, there is thousands of acres of opt outs. And there is a small handful of farms on, some of them on ranches. So I just want to be clear what we're talking about here. And, you know, like this is, I just feel very unprepared as a commissioner to be discussing individual farms.
Apologize for that. I just, I'm trying to show what the consequences of not following the staff recommendation would be. And I apologize. I do have a map and I have a bunch of copies to hand out, so you guys, do you have ten?
Honestly, I think the map of this one particular project is irrelevant because this is about zoning for all opt out zones. And, and so it's, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be discussing one project. That's, it just feels there's something that doesn't feel right without us having our due diligence and having our ability to thoroughly understand the project that's in front of us. And this, it is not this project that's in front of us. It's the ambiguity of the definitions.
Correct.
And I would like to keep it to those definitions for our discussion or the agenda at hand. This is my perspective, if I may.
Thank you.
So I agree with Duncan there. That's, looks, looks right to me. The only thing I see, I don't see any ambiguity in this. The one suspect thing I do see is that the ambiguity, ambiguity determination seems to be a disingenuous backdoor attack on a particular cannabis farm. You know, that the fact that this comes up at this time, where'd it come from?
If I understand correctly, there are other, this is just one example of how this determination would affect this particular project. There are other projects that would be affected, correct?
Based on what, based on what Duncan said, I was just saying that it just seems kind of suspect to me. There's not, not near as much information as I'm used to getting on anything like this. It seems really one-sided and just kind of different.
I, I very much agree with Commissioner McIntosh. And I intentionally did not include any specific project references at all into the staff report or to any of the backup. Any parcel specific information was redacted from the applications that I used to reference. So I just want to, you know, to kind of try and get us back to the item at hand. Again, if parcels are impacted by this, by the adoption of this resolution, or if parcels are allowed to proceed because of the failure to adopt this resolution, there is always the opportunity for community members on either side of the equation to appeal it. And as Commissioner McIntosh pointed out, then we do have the ability to review the project's specific details, to give a comparative analysis that is not specific to, you know, a cannabis farm. If a use permit was granted for a hog farm and specific APNs were listed in the use permit, would we find it appropriate to allow for that hog farm to move on to adjacent parcels that that hog farmer had subsequently acquired? I think that we would want to evaluate it from the potential, from the land use impacts or the potential impacts. And that is the reason that I see ambiguity here is that it says an exception to this limitation is allowed for applicants who have submitted an application. Doesn't say for applicants who have submitted an application on a legal parcel. Legal parcel, the definition is ambiguous, in my opinion, as it relates to this limitations section. Because on the water board enrollment specifically, on the two thousand fifteen order to date, you have to list all of the assessors parcel numbers specifically. If those assessors parcels numbers are not listed on an application, they are not enrolled in the water board program. And thus that is the basis that I think there's ambiguity. And, and that is why, you know, I crafted the resolution as I did because I don't believe that the definition of legal parcel ties very effectively to this limitations code section.
Thank you for that.
So I have a couple of questions for staff and that just opened more. So I'm going to hold on those for a second while I wrap my brain around this a little bit more. So if there would be a reorganization of cannabis practices on an existing permit, would it need to come back to the cannabis department on the same parcel? So if they were going to rearrange how their operation worked, that would need to come back and get approved, correct?
Yes, and if they wanted to add an APN, it would also need to come back for, you know, reanalysis potentially, especially because those other APNs in a subsequent review perhaps didn't have the biological assessment done or the cultural assessment done. So it, you know, while outside of the opt outs, that process isn't particularly contentious or problematic. They just have to add the additional APNs to the water board enrollment. They have to go through all of, you know, the steps in terms of evaluating the additional land area and activities.
And that would be the same process for a hog farm or a winery or a cattle ranch? If they purchase additional parcels and wanted to expand and include additional uses?
I would say that anything that was a discretionary land use, yes. You know, if there are land uses that are allowed by right, then no, they wouldn't come back or review.
Cannabis is the only one that would have to be asked for permission. You don't have to ask permission to run cows.
Commissioner Harper, can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I said, if you want to run hogs or cows, you wouldn't need to ask permission.
If you want to run cows, you don't if your parcel is zoned correctly. But if you want to have a hog farm, you do.
Hold on, okay. And was there ever a list of grandfathered APNs ever generated and approved associated with the service districts?
Not that I'm aware of.
From your point of view and with your experience, are, what are, is there concern with the idea? From your point of view and with your experience, are, what are, is there concern with the idea of segregating parcels that were already contiguous prior to the opt-out zones being put into place versus identifying contiguous parcels after that point in time? I E., you know, identifying which parcels were under one land ownership prior to that point versus the idea that at this point in time, people could purchase additional parcels to enlarge and have a larger contiguous parcel? Can you elaborate on what those two ideas would look like and any concerns, please?
So generally, that legal parcel definition is just problematic. And I think that should probably be at the top of our list to address when we get into cannabis ordinance updates. In terms of the current interpretation of that as it relates to cannabis land uses, I would say, specific to this ambiguity determination, it's obviously, you know, program-wide, there are some specific nuances related to the, the interplay between the legal parcel definition, what that allows for, and then the, the legal parcel definition and what constraints might be placed on that as a result of a historic water board enrollment in one of these limitations areas. Generally speaking, the additional parcels could then qualify for additional licenses. The expansion of the mature canopy size, depending on what the current or historical canopy size might be or, you know, was, could potentially also allow for greater mature, total mature canopy. And so that's why, again, I, I personally find this, the, you know, the over, the overlap between the legal parcel definition and this limitations section to be quite ambiguous. Because it doesn't specifically clarify whether or not an assessor's parcel number that was listed on an application for water board enrollment is the only parcel that would qualify for licensure in these limitations areas.
However, the only, in the state's mind, if there was only one A P N listed on a parcel, that's the only parcel they would think would be considered viable for a license, correct?
Yeah, and, you know, in terms of water board enrollment, they, if you were to purchase, or, you know, if one was to acquire or want to utilize adjacent parcels, those A P Ns would need to be listed on the water board enrollment as specific individual A P Ns.
So as an example for properties, property owners outside of the opt-out zones, if they wanted to work on contiguous land, they would be able to amend their water board permit to add parcels or reapply whatever that process may be? And then come back to the county and, and work and expand, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And they would be, they would be able to have, if they had multiple parcels that were all adjacent contiguous to each other, they would be able to have contiguous, I mean, they would be able to have cultivation licenses on each parcel?
And/or shared infrastructure, you know? So the cultivation could be on one parcel, the post-harvest facility could be on another, you know? So there's a few variations there. But yes, they would be able to have multiple 10,000 square foot licenses on the other adjacent parcels.
Isn't that called stacking?
So.
So stacking would not be considered if you have a house on one parcel and you've got three properties surrounding that house and you have, and you have a farm, a garden on each one of the parcels, that's not considered stacking?
No.
Interesting.
Stacking is multiple cultivation licenses on the same parcel.
On one parcel, which is again, part of the reason that I think at the top of our priorities list should be to address this legal parcel definition as we go forward. Because I think part of the rationale also for the way that that legal parcel definition was constructed could be interpreted to have been an attempt to prevent stacking. So that interpretation was made prior to my time as cannabis division director, which the previous director allowed for cultivation licenses on adjacent parcels to basically proceed and not be considered stacking.
So, you know, as Commissioner Harper pointed out, let's say you do have a large ranch that has multiple parcels. And you had one parcel that was grandfathered in. Now, if this, if this resolution doesn't pass, then potentially you could have, let's say you had five parcels, you could have five cultivation licenses on that ranch, which nominally was grandfathered in with one. Is that correct?
Hence the, my request for this ambiguity determination item, yes.
Right, okay.
Would each one have to be approved individually?
Yes.
But each one would have a right to go through the process? To go through the process with that. But then if they wanted to increase their cultivation zone from a 10,000 square foot to something larger, an acre, that would go through the C U P process?
Correct. And currently, we are not accepting new one-acre license applications until the cannabis ordinances get updated so that we can address the prioritization mechanisms for those limited amount of remaining one-acre licenses.
Do we have a motion? All right, I'll keep the floor open for discussion at this point in time.
Could you provide some clarity on, is there indeed different conditions for opt-out zones on expansion as was stated by a community member? Or are all opt-out zones identical in their definitions of their ability to expand and/or rather not expand?
Yes, there are significant differences. This, as I understand it, this limitations section is, they, they collectively are the only areas that now don't have standalone ordinances that have been adopted to address the specific constraints applied to these opt-out areas. So again, taking that into consideration, not wanting to get into this larger can of worms, I narrowed the scope of what I recommended in the resolution to simply address mature canopy. Not even to address whether additional activities such as micro-business would be allowed. So if you look at the additional, more recent opt-out ordinances, says no expansion, no distribution, no micro-business, no non-store firm retail. And specifically goes through every single cannabis land use and prohibits that.
And that was gone, I, I have not been a part of that process, but that was vetted through the public, the public process and has gone through CEQA and is legally sound?
It came before the planning commission and the board of supervisors in its adoption, yes.
Yeah, and, and CEQA was done for this opt-out?
I believe a CEQA exemption of some sort was applied. I don't remember specifically off the top of my head.
So the original language, just in 2017, establishing those opt-out areas didn't mention expansion. But since then, as we have incorporated additional opt-out areas, they have been more specific. Yeah.
Well, it sounds like maybe the Coffee Creek opt-out zone needs to go through that same process before we make recommend, it seems like the others, the other opt-out zones might work within this, but it hasn't been specifically clarified through the public process.
Well, I, I brought up opt-out areas, amending those and so forth at the, the general plan meetings. And I was told, we're not allowed to discuss opt-out areas anymore. And so I guess because we're rewriting the cannabis ordinance, so I don't think that's a possibility.
At the, at the time when the last opt-out, so there were requests for additional opt-out ordinances, one from, you know, Hetton, and I think another one, maybe on Little, Little, was it East Weaver? And so because there were longstanding, community-driven petitions that hadn't been addressed, a mechanism was created last year, the year before, to allow for those opt-outs to attempt to acquire the necessary signatures and meet a particular standard, of which I don't remember the specifics, but it was something like 60% of the properties, 70% of the landmass, you know, some certain percentage of the property owners and, and landmass within the opt-out, they needed to gain support for these new, for the new opt-outs to be established. And the direction from the board, as I recall it, was that those were going to be the last new potential opt-out requests that the county was going to consider. We don't actually have a formal process established to opt-in or opt-out at this point. So I think that's why, you know, that, that was the basis, as I understand it, to say, no, we're not talking about opt-outs anymore.
Got my head dropped off.
I saw that. Right, but it's, there's, you know, there's a difference between expansion and moving your cultivation area. And so there's like one scenario where there is a concern of stacking license, not stacking, but having different, each A P N having its own farm, which I see in, in the opt-out zones, that not being the intent of, of the, the community who have voted for an opt-out zone. But for a 150-acre ranch, to be able to move it to a different, a different portion of the ranch that is more conducive to agriculture, I, I, I see that, that makes sense. And it is in the, the spirit of a legal parcel. I personally have two parcels on my land. And I've also done a lot line adjustment to absorb another parcel. And when I absorbed that other parcel, it came into my A P N. My A P N did not change, right? And so I think there is a legal and a planning process for farms to work around this, this hindrance from being able to move it. And, and so that might just be more legwork on the property owner. But there's a mechanism there for them to do that.
I think for me, I think of it in an equestrian sense. So if you buy a property that has an old barn that's falling down and you want to expand and build a bigger facility and it's, and you've bought a property that has multiple parcels and you have another parcel that's su, more suitable for a larger facility as you want to ban, build and expand, and it, it fits within county code, that you should be able to do it. I, I think the hard part is the, the opt-out component for it, that where the communities have expressed and that there was an idea that it was tied to a parcel in a specific location. Okay, I will put a motion that we continue the discussion of this item to our next general meeting in order to continue with our agenda for this evening and revisit this at our next meeting, which is at what date, Debbie? On July, it's the, the later one, right?
We could get a notice out for July 24, I believe it is.
Okay, so that this would be continued to July 24th?
We wouldn't need to notice it. We could continue it to July 24th and, and have that meeting.
Couldn't we just continue it to the next regularly scheduled meeting? If it's continued to a date certain, then it doesn't need to be noticed?
Yes, we could, since we don't have to notice it, yes, thank you. July 10.
Okay, so I, I am putting forth the motion that we continue this at our next regularly scheduled meeting of July 10th.
I'll second that.
Is there a discussion?
I have a question. So if the planning commission does not give guidance one way or another, we, we want to have contiguous parcels included or we don't want to have contiguous parcels included? If we give you no direction, it just remains as an ambiguous kind of status?
It does, and then basically I get the opportunity to make a discretionary decision in which the applicant and/or other individuals can oppose that decision. And then it would come before you as an appeal of a director's decision.
Any other, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, in that case, I will make a subsequent motion that, no, never mind.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there any additional discussion? I'm hearing none. Would we like to take a vote at this time?
May I, Chair, may I ask a question? Is there any additional information that the commission would like to be included for this item if it is continued?
You know me, I like numbers. So I guess I'm just wondering how many parcels this change? Or how many existing farms have contiguous parcels that this could impact versus as it currently stands? While viewing that potentially it would impact every single license for future contiguous purchases?
So the reason I'm smiling at you is because that really, again, brings up the ambiguity of this code section. It says, "For applicants who have submitted an application." So are you requesting us to try and coordinate with the water board for any and all historical applications, period? Or are you requesting applications that were approved? Or are you requesting applications that were historically approved that have maintained good standing with the water board? None of that is clarified in this limitations section.
It seems like the placeholder was a 2015 North Coast Water Quality Control Board, whatever it's called, right? Enrollment, that was the placeholder, right? Having properties that, that apply for the state water board after that. after that, that is, doesn't seem to fit within the intent and the spirit of, of the ordinance of the opt-outs in Trinity County. But it is the interpretation of legal parcel that is my biggest hang-up, right? And so I guess I would like to see a list of the, the parcels that had signed up, that are the, the pre, the, that signed up with the North Coast.
Okay, so applied for, submitted an application for? Or were, or were actually enrolled as a result of an application?
That qualify to be cultivators within the opt-out zones, based on their
So then that's, that's my question for you then. Is it having submitted an application? Because that's what code says, an applicant who has submitted an application. It doesn't actually say that they were enrolled into the twenty fifteen order, just as they submitted an application.
So do you, do you have a list right now of how many license, yeah? How many grandfathered licenses there are?
So again, we get into some confusing terminology. The application for enrollment into the water board is not a Trinity County cannabis license.
No, well, I'm asking for a separate, that's a separate question. I'm asking how many licenses claim that grandfathering ability right now? That potentially would want to expand onto contiguous parcels? If you can at least give us that number, I think that might help a little bit.
Would you like me to also include the TPZ parcels that were affected similarly by this, by the potential grandfathering in?
Only if they have a license.
Okay.
I'm concerned we're going down a rabbit hole. I'm concerned about identifying specific parcels, and I don't want us to go there.
Just the number.
I know, but you're gonna have to generate a list to create a number. He's gonna have to, to outline it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have to make that list public. If you want me to break down the specific number of applications applied for under the twenty fifteen order in these specific areas, I can do that and just give the total numbers.
So you have, you have at your hands a list of all properties that not enrolled, but just submitted applications at that time?
What we have available to us generally is C W I X, California Water, Integrated Water Quality. You know, that, that's the water board sort of portal. It would probably require coordination with water board to, to make sure that we're getting a comprehensive list for you.
Okay, so list of submitted applications for enrollment under the twenty fifteen order by those associated dates, is that what we're looking at? Or do, like?
Yeah, I just really want to know what, you know, what parcels, but they're applied, I mean, this was almost ten years ago. You know, that they, they, at that point in time, they, they did what the county wanted. They did what the, the, the state wanted, or the North Coast Water Quality Control Board wanted. And they applied, or they submitted an application before legalization, other than two fifteen, in hopes of being able to have a legal license at some point of time. That was the only reason to, to enroll, is to have a placeholder. So I would like to know, you know, how many there are in these opt-out zones? And how many of those have numerous parcels connected to their contiguous legal parcel? So I could have an understanding of the impact of allowing or disallowing this to follow through.
But, but they could buy adjacent parcels, so that, that's, you know, that, that, you know, you're not asking for currently owned. I mean, everybody has an adjacent parcel that you could potentially buy, and then, you know, so.
Good point.
I'm just curious for a simpler answer to my original question, which is, can you just take a GIS map and overlay the opt-out zones? And count how many licenses are in those opt-out areas? Just how many licenses you have?
That's a very straightforward and accomplishable task in terms of applications submitted by the varying date ranges for these varying geographic locations within the limitation section. That's a much more involved task. And so I don't think it's reasonable that staff will be able to accomplish that for the July tenth meeting, possibly not even by the July twenty-fourth meeting.
But that's.
I was just trying to, trying to get an idea of the scope. It doesn't answer totally how many there would be, but it's just like, is this fifteen? Is it a hundred and fifty? I don't know.
But they would also then have to, I just think that, that's targeting a little bit the cannabis industry by having those maps produced. I, I'm just concerned about having those map produced in the opt-out zones. This is, this conversation isn't just for the opt-out zones. This conversation is also for outside of the opt-out zones. And, and our, our conversation just getting so focused on that, I'm a little concerned.
And I'd like some clarity on that. Does this def- this definition of legal parcel? It, you know, I, you, you strike on a, a good point. This is for the entire ordinance. This is not just for the opt-out zones, that the definition of legal parcel will be changed throughout the entire county?
No.
For cannabis.
No. We are not proposing changing any definitions or any of the verbiage in code.
It's only for the opt-out areas, right?
Asking for you all to clarify the ambiguity that exists in the current construction of code. If we were to modify the existing language, that would need to come back as an ordinance amendment.
So this, this does only affect opt-out areas, this resolution?
And so it's clear throughout the county on all other, on, it's clear that legal parcel, I mean, what legal parcel means throughout the county. But what we're, what you're, you're proposing that in the opt-out zones, it is ambiguous. But throughout the rest of the county, it is not ambiguous.
It's not the legal parcel definition so much as what is actually grandfathered in? Is it just the parcel that had, that was enrolled in the water quality board? Or could it also be adjacent parcels?
Right, the, the ambiguity, as, as I perceive it, is related to the interplay between the legal parcel definition and the, an, an exception to this limitation is allowed for applicants who have submitted an application for enrollment under the twenty fifteen order. It is what it is, you know, countywide. This is the place where, from my perspective, it, it is unclear what the intent on, on how to allow for or limit the, the inclusion of additional parcels or the expansion of mature canopy sizes.
Any additional discussion? Okay, motion on the floor currently is to continue this to our next meeting. Are there any subsequent motions? Go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can you then just clarify for staff what exactly you're requesting staff to provide you? And then I can let you know whether I think that's accomplishable by July tenth in terms of what we talked through. Some of it could be, if it's a more expansive research project, then perhaps we need to continue it to the second meeting in July or later.
I have no request at this point in time and rescind my earlier request.
I, I'm still wondering if you can help us identify the scope of the problem, or the, not the problem, but just, you know, the, the question, the issue. And that is, again, do we have an idea of how many licenses have been issued within the opt-out areas? And I realize that that's only, only going to be a subset, that there may be people who have enrolled way back when and who don't currently have a license and who are gonna claim grandfathering. That's a whole different issue. I'm just trying to figure out roughly when we're looking at how many potential licensees would come in and say, yes, I'm currently grandfathered, and I would like to expand to an adjacent parcel. You know, just how many of those there are.
Right, you don't have to be currently licensed to qualify for licensure under this code.
Correct, yeah, that's what I just said. I know you, you could have been enrolled and not have a current license, I get that.
So you're asking for the current number of licensees within this limitations?
Within the limitations, yes.
It's less than a handful.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
But how many parcels qualify for licensure under this limitation section? That, to me, is a more pertinent piece of information. The, the bigger, more problematic question is, how would we identify what additional parcels could be purchased? And then expanded upon into within those opt-out areas?
Well, that's going to be infinite.
Hence the reason for my request for an ambiguity determination.
So I want to conclude this discussion at this point in time. I want to thank the members of the public that have come to participate on this. I think that the commission has determined to continue this because we value this and need to consider this additionally and ask additional questions prior to making a decision. And so I want to thank you for bringing your concerns forward and being here. And I hope that we will continue to have your participation. Thank you. I'm gonna take a break. You want a motion for a break?
I think you could just.
At this point in time, we'll take a five-minute break prior to continuing on to regular calendar agenda item D. Thank you.
You said five minutes?
Yes, please. It's not a project, it was proposed by county staff.
So the reason I'm smiling at you is because that really, again, brings up the ambiguity of this code section.
You want to motion for a break? I think you could just. At this point in time, we'll take a five minute break prior to continuing on to regular calendar agenda item D. Thank you.
You said five minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just before we get going, I'll make a motion. To the commission that. We adjourn no later than ten P M. And so we'll go ahead and make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just a clarification, and if we need to vote again, that would be that any items that we do not conclude prior to that time will be continued to our next meeting. Is that agreeable? Okay, verbal yeses and nodding heads. All right, so want to first of all, thank you, Mittner Harmish for hanging in there with us and continuing through our. Other items and we look forward to your presentation, so I'll turn it over to staff.
Is Ryan online?
I am.
All right, Ryan, I think you got the helm there.
Okay, all right, I have a presentation to share, is it okay if I share my screen?
Yeah, does he need permission to share his screen or is he able to do it on Zoom?
I think I can do it, let me. All right, can you see my presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you for having me today to talk about the housing element. I realize that y'all have had a long meeting, I'll try to get through. My presentation without getting bogged down and keep the keep the meeting going. For anyone who's in the room that hasn't interacted with the housing element, the housing element is an element or chapter of the general plan. But it is the only one that's required to be adopted on a specific schedule. That's set by the state and the state, it's also the only element that the state gets to review every single word on and comment on. And you have to get their approval to achieve a compliant element, so. Housing element is a little different than some of the other general plan elements, and I just wanted to. Give that information for for folks in the room. So today, what we're gonna talk about, I'll give a quick project update, the housing element, housing elements are typically a two year project. So we're nearing the end, so I'll give a quick project update. We'll talk about the two iterations of the housing element that we have yet to discuss. That would be the the H C D review draft and then the revised H C D review draft. It can get a little complicated, so I've tried to use colors to keep track of things, I'll do my best to explain the changes as we go through. And then we'll end by just talking about next steps. Of course, I will be here to to answer questions. There is a hand raised. Do we need to take a comment?
No, public comments not open at this time, you may continue with your presentation.
Thank you. Okay, oh, and then just so you know, I have a note here, this term H C D, it stands for the California Department of Housing and Community Development. That's actually the department with the state that is tasked with reviewing all housing elements. So you'll hear that that term H C D quite a bit. So a quick project update, so in November of last year, we released a public review draft of the housing element. And at that time, we also sent it into the state to get some early comments, they call that informal review. Just to just to kind of jump the 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 schedule a little bit, so we we put that out there for public review. On March fourth, we held a study session with the planning commission and board to review. The public review draft as well as all the public comments we received and the H C D comments that we received informally. Following that meeting, we made revisions to the element and actually packaged up an H C D review draft. And on March eighteenth, we submitted that to the state for the first time for formal review. On the the fourteenth of April, within that formal review, they gave us some additional informal comments. We met with H C D in April to discuss those comments and really figure out what they were looking for. And then we revised the draft again, so we created a revised H C D review draft. Which we had to post for public review before resubmitting, we actually resubmitted it within the review period. So it was able to be considered as part of the initial formal review. And at the end of that review on May thirteenth, we received a letter from the state that the element as drafted and revised. Complies with state law, meets their requirements, and they had no additional comments for us. I have to say, that's only, I've only been able to achieve this once. With a housing element, just because the state's requirements are so extreme. And it really depends on which reviewer you get, what they're gonna focus on. We really, by getting the document to the state early and making those changes and working with them, we were able to to to. Have a compliant element by the end of the first review period. The state, by the way, gets a minimum of two formal review periods, so we'll discuss the the second review in a minute. So quickly, I wanted to talk about the changes to the draft since that study session. So after we had that study session, we created the public or the H C D review draft. That really responded to all those comments to the board's direction. And in creating that, we created a version in track changes for easy review. Just for transparency for the public as well as for H C D, so they can review it more quickly. So that version is up and the revisions that came out of. Out of creating the H T D review draft are shown in track changes. We also incorporated changes based on public comments, those are all summarized and our responses summarized as well in appendix D if you're interested. And then we also posted the comments from H C D on the project website. So if you're interested in what the state was saying and how we responded in the element, those are all available. So that H C D review draft, again, March eighteenth, we submitted that H C D review draft for formal review. The revisions that went into the creation of that draft, this was based off that first round of H C D informal comments, we had to add a number of programs. The first one here is really important, this is a program that we added. Just knowing the the circumstances that the county's in, the state requirements are such that. Implementation of all the required programs, it's it's really. Probably not feasible for any jurisdiction, particularly one with staffing constraints, funding constraints. So we actually crafted a program to with H C D to reach out to them annually to seek. Information and assistance from them in implementing your housing element over the next five years. We had some additional programs added here that that I've listed. Permit Streamlining Act, this is just a required program that says you'll put into the code the the required timelines. Based on the permit streamlining act and that you'll meet those timelines. We work to address broadband access and fire risk, these were two things that H C D. Knowing the comments that we received, wanted us to to include. Additional programs that we included at that time was to address the high cost of insurance. To have a program for energy conservation, this is something that H C D required as well. And then the last two were big requirements that the state wanted to see. The first is called place based strategies for community investment. This is just programs that that don't look countywide, but that look at individual areas within in the county and what some of the deficiencies or. Advantages those those areas may have and then react appropriately, right? So for this program, we want to address areas with lacking community investment, right? And then with the final one, redevelopment, the state wanted to to see a program to working towards encouraging and incentivizing redevelopment. That was also something we heard from the public comments as well, that there are a number of underutilized. Commercial properties in certain areas that really this the county should encourage redevelopment. We also revised a number of programs, these are the key ones here, so program for water and sewer service capacity. We actually revise this to lower the county's commitments. The the draft program, we felt was a little too intense and H C D agreed, so we lowered those commitments, it created a more realistic funding goal. We revised the housing rehabilitation program to have additional actions. We incorporated fire risk within the anti displacement program. And then based on H C D comments, we had to add multilingual access to future engagement efforts, so. H C D specifically wanted to see engagement in M O N, so we've added that. So just a reminder of that timeline for that draft, on the eighteenth, we submitted it for review. And then in April, we got those informal comments, we discussed them and we revised and we created the revised H C D draft, and that's what we'll talk about now. I again, I apologize for all the all the iterations, it's it's part of working with the state, so. This revised H C D draft, this was the one that we created within that. That formal review period and we were able to resubmit it, only a few edits came. In this iteration, just because there were only, you know, a handful of comments at this point. The only really substantial edit that that was incorporated as part of the revised H C D draft. Was to include support for small home based businesses as part of program thirty one. You know, housing and the economy are so tied in together, H C D wanted to see a connection to small home based businesses and communities that don't have. Retail centers or commercial centers. And then a few a few smaller changes. We added a priority level to each of the programs, this is something that I talked to H C D about. And, you know, they understand that resources are limited, so in order to protect the county, we prioritize the programs. And H C D actually signed off on those, so that will help guide implementation over the next five years. The revisions that were incorporated as part of this draft are are shown in track changes, but also with yellow highlighting. In case you need to find those or you'd like to find those, and again, we posted H C D comments and our and our revisions on the website. So at the at the end of that formal review period, H C completed its review and found out and found that. The housing element as drafted and revised meets the requirement of state law. They issued us a formal letter that says as much, so at this point. If we if we if the county adopts the housing element without making any substantial changes, so not deleting programs or completely revising programs. Then H C D has to actually certify us, they can't go against their previous finding, as far as I understand. And that if, as long as we don't make substantial edits, they won't be able to reopen their review in the next round of review. As I stated previously. The state gets a minimum of two rounds of review, the first being a ninety day review that we've already gone through. The second being after adoption, so following adoption, they get another sixty days, we already have the letter. So as long as we're not making huge substantial changes, I expect certification to happen very quickly. Which is important because if you don't, if you aren't aware, the the state deadline for the housing element to be adopted has already passed. The county got a little late start, we're doing our best to to expedite the schedule, but we are past that deadline and there are consequences if if the housing element isn't adopted and certified. So next steps from here, you can see I have two crossed out here because we get to skip a round of review. Because we have our clean letter, we don't have to resubmit it and get them to sign off on it before we go to adoption, right? So we get to skip around a review. Our task now is to complete public adoption hearings, so review the housing element and receive a recommendation from the planning commission. And then hold a public hearing with the board of supervisors to consider adoption. After that, we will then submit the adopted housing element for final certification with the state. And again, as I said, if if we don't make substantial changes, I expect that review to be very quick. The state is very encouraged by our project and our our progress and would would like us to be certified. They like our elements, so they're eager to receive the next draft. So at this point, I'm here to answer your questions, but we are here to receive a recommendation on the housing element if you would like to give one. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen and and be available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there questions for staff or are Mittner Harmish at this point in time?
Open a can of worms, but what what are the consequences for not approving it in time? Sorry, what what are the consequences for not not approving it in time? You said there was.
Yeah, there there are some consequences, some of them have to do with how you actually process your housing element. We're luckily past that, but when you don't have a a compliance certified housing element, you can't actually get. The state has actually a a an enforcement team of lawyers and they will actually. Start an enforcement action against you. If at an extreme, you could actually lose your. Your your land use decision making ability because your housing element isn't valid, thus your general plan isn't valid. And so it 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 can open up a whole can of worms, you're right.
Thank you.
All right, at this point in time, we'll open it to public comment, is there any in the room? Is there any on Zoom? Oh, sorry, sir.
My name is Tommy Lor. I don't know if you can hear me well, anyway, I'm from Post Mountain. And thank you, board commissioners and chairs. For tonight, I don't know too much about the housing element and how that play a role into my community. But I'm here to represent the M O N community, just to let you know that there is. Zero housing being built, I mean, in the last few years in Post Mountain. And it's because they can't get the road, it's so hard to get manufacturer home or mobile home up there. I think the solution for our community is tiny home, tiny house. Up there, and if we have. Septa, you know, we can build on Septa, but if there is a program, like a streamlined program that will build tiny houses into our community. You know how much that will be. Affordable and more economically sound to the community and that will benefit everybody at large. In the county and the whole community, so that we have clean sanitation. We have housing and we have, you know, safe place to live and just, you know. So I'm I'm here to just, you know, speak on behalf of that and see what are your thoughts and and. See what's, you know, is there any thing that we can do to to help to facilitate or is there any program that's available to help us? Thank you.
Didn't we approve a tiny home?
Mm hmm.
Ballack?
On to, well, we can discuss that later, yeah. Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? You're good. Okay, no public comment on Zoom? Okay. I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Or for a motion.
I would. I move that the planning commission recommend to the board of supervisors. That they adopt the presented general plan housing element update for the regional housing needs allocation. R N H A O seventh housing cycle twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine.
I'll second that.
And I would just like to add for Mr. Lor's benefit. And I, I would just like to add for Mr. Lor's benefit. The Planning Commission did approve a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for the tiny homes. And I saw that ordinance published in the paper for the Board of Supervisors to consider. So hopefully, they will be making it a lot easier for people to build or buy tiny homes to, yeah, definitely address the, that need for housing.
Sorry, I may be out of order, but quick question, I like, um, does the board have to approve, it's on the table and they gotta approve? You know what timeline, when the, the next meeting? Thank you.
Okay, so they said that it's been approved and should be codified the second week in July, and so it should be available shortly.
Sounds like a good time to start a tiny home business in the pines.
Thank you for your participation today.
Chair, if I may, I also want to point out that, you know, because the tiny homes apply to just movable tiny homes in terms of how that ordinance was constructed. I think a lot of people don't understand that you can build a minimum dwelling that is really quite small and probably reasonably cost-effective to do so. And it could also be done under the limited density rural owner builder ordinance as well.
Yeah, and just for clarification, that was also previously known as, previously known as Class K housing, correct?
Class K or L D R D.
Thank you. Alright. Roll call vote? Harper, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Harper, my apologies.
Aye.
Commissioner Ball?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner Flight?
Aye.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ryan, I, I definitely compliment you on getting that all through H C D so smoothly, you guys did a lot of work, so, good job.
You again for hanging in there with us tonight. Alright, moving on to reports and announcements, Planning Commissioners.
I guess I have just one question. There's, when I was a Planning Commissioner a few years ago, there was an annual Planning Commission Association Conference. Planning Commissioners of the State of California Conference. And I would like to know when that is set? And if there's funding available for our lodging to participate in such an event? Very valuable, really good information.
Lodging and enrollment. I'm going, okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that Commissioner, I mean, sorry, Supervisor Lootwiler and I are still working on recreate or activating the Lewiston Architectural Review Committee. We did get a commitment from the Historical Society that Darryl Forsland would be the Historical Society representative. So we just need to find the, the other representatives and then take that to the Board of Supervisors to get that Architectural Review Committee going.
So while we're still in this meeting, I do want to just ask an additional question to staff relevant to item C, if the commission will approve. Is it more appropriate that we address this concern in the zoning ordinance overall review rather than bringing it back next week? What, you know, if we're making this decision on the side and then making sure it gets into the zoning ordinance, that's one thing. But is it just more pertinent that we just address it with the zoning ordinance as a whole? Or what are the ramifications if we don't?
Well, I think since the motion passed to continue it, I don't know if Sean Cameron's still on the line and if we would need to proceed with that.
So we should have the opportunity to, if I wanted to change my motion and if the individual that seconded it would agree, then it could be reopened, because we're still in the same meeting as to when that motion was made and approved.
Okay, then in terms of my opinion, Sean, were you about to?
Uh, yeah, I would, I mean, I would discourage that, especially since I think the public has been sort of notified that it's continued to the next meeting, so. If we were to open it, I think it would be counter to sort of, you know, normal practice in that regard.
Understood.
So then perhaps if we want to take council's advice there, you know, we talk about it again on the tenth. And, you know, that can be the motion from the board at that time to, you know, address it in overall cannabis ordinance updates.
Yeah, and I think just that, yeah, you can still give direction to staff, and so if you want them to sort of opine on that or give you to add that to the, you know, the forthcoming meeting, then they can do that.
Yeah, so I would make direction to staff of benefits to addressing this now versus addressing it with the zoning ordinance as a whole, as to why I push this now versus later. Thank you.
Will do.
Does, do Planning Commissioners concur on that direction to receive input on that at our next meeting?
Well, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and any insight would be beneficial, but opt-outs in my perception kind of defy the zoning, because the zoning allows for certain activities except for in the opt-outs. And so it might not be the appropriate place to discuss the definitions in opt-out zones for, during the zoning updates. I might be mis-informed, but it just, it seems like the opt-outs are very unique. And oftentimes are, are specifically counter to the zoning, that's why there are opt-outs of the zoning.
But aren't they more analogous to, you know, the overlay zones for critical water supply and the recreation and all that? To me, it's, it's, it is a zoning kind of thing.
Well, yeah, and typically like a, like a water district or a fire district that has a reason behind these boundaries or a critical water overlay, but just a blanket opt-out in communities like the fire district, like for instance, like East Fork was just put in because they made as overlay or an opt-out for an entire area, you know, and that it seems discriminatory and that has been put to bed, that's been put to rest, but it is not a typical overlay that has a rationalization behind particular boundaries in my perception.
I, I still think it's a good thing to have as a discussion item on the tenth.
Yeah, I agree.
It's more, more information.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Deputy Director of Community Development.
So sadly to report, our first attempt at getting a new planner did not work out. So the job has been reposted and is flying currently, so if anybody is interested in being a planner in Trinity County, please apply. Angel needs a companion over in the, the planning office there. Also, I just wanted to let everybody know that tonight's my last meeting, I put in my two-week notice today, effective July tenth. So I just wanted to let everybody know that in the meeting.
Thank you for all of you, all of that you have done leading the community development program during your time, and you will be missed.
Thank you. I echo that, your, your, your experience and dedication has gone, has, has been noticed and it is going to you're gonna have big shoes to fill, or you are leaving big shoes to fill, so to speak. We're gonna miss you, leaving big shoes to fill. It's been a long night, we're gonna miss you.
Agreed.
Service. And I hope you have greener pastures.
I haven't been here very long, but it's been a pleasure.
Yep, I might be around, I might be around for a while, but.
Hopefully you're gonna be doing something fun if you're leaving us.
Yeah, I'm still not sure yet.
Are there any other updates we would like from our Deputy Director prior to his parting? Thank you, and we will adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-one.